You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Swansea.
All right. At that time, it was called to order the meeting, this zoning board adjustment meeting for June 17th, 2024 to order. I will ask Beverly to call the roll and read our agenda.
Edel Hearn. James Ward.
Here.
Wayne Leffler.
Here.
Eric Calio. Lisa Thorne.
Here.
Ann Kurzinski.
Here.
Ryan Rikers.
Keith Young.
Here.
The agenda for June 17th, 2024 for the Town of Swansea zoning board adjustment is as follows. Minutes will be reviewed and approved for May 28th, 2024. There'll be a consideration of a regional impact statement, and then public hearings will follow. First public hearing is the ZBA 24-004 special exception. All Purpose Storage LLC has requested a special exception pursuant to section five, Article B 2A of the zoning ordinance to allow warehouse and/or industrial park uses. The subject property is shown at tax map 203 lot 20 and is in the business and rural ag districts.
Mr. Chairman, I think the motion would accept the case as written.
I can finish. Sorry.
Thought you were done.
The second, no, just taking a breath.
Oh, okay.
The second of public hearing is for ZBA 24-005. Variants Scott and Whitney Ryan have requested a variance pursuant to section four, Article A of the Town of Swansea zoning ordinance to have a small contractor bay within their farming building. The subject property is shown at tax map 228 lot five and is in the rural agricultural district. The third public hearing is for ZBA 24-008. Variance Sign Art has requested a variance pursuant to section three, Article, is that S?
Absolutely.
Six A of the Town of Swansea zoning ordinance to attach an additional FW web sign to the FW web building along Old Homestead Highway. The subject property is shown at tax map 224 lot 28, 28, and is in the business, residence, and rural ag districts, and other business that may arise.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to a couple of housekeeping items with minutes from May 20th, 2024. Most of our home here at that meeting, those have been distributed. I'll just make a motion on those minutes.
Repeat my motion.
Okay. Brian's approved for the second.
Awesome.
The second approved the minutes of May 20th, 2024 as presented. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now. Yes. We have, well, we have our agenda this evening, and we need to take a vote whether or not any of these would rise to the level of having a regional impact. I'll make a motion that those last two cases in front of us today, they've risen to the level of regional impact.
I disagree. I think that the Bezos Road problem is right against the town, Keene Town Line. The traffic goes through to Keene on Bezos Road, and the last time this project was brought to the planning board, a representative from Keene came and spoke to us about their concern, their lack of concern.
All right.
If it does, I would.
That's a good point. I have a broad motion. Okay. Stefan, I know this is really putting on a spark, but this is really for the first one.
Yeah, just because of the vote. They.
It's okay.
The first or proposed.
They're asking each other questions.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. So, yeah, because the application has been asked twice, and it won't be until next month that it'll be seen again. They want to know if a special needs to be known, like the earliest law for me would be July 1st. And then we would be, who would be delaying it because of originally that third?
No, it's just the first law for me, like all of ours need to be noticed, and it needs to be noticed, and we will add as well. Or do July for today.
Why would we?
Because the applicant's been waiting. I have no idea what you guys are talking about.
Well, it's a regional impact. I'm not sure how we move forward.
Oh.
It's a returning path. Yeah, I'm sorry. Because we've not had, we don't have any of these regional impact laws, and I'm not sure exactly what it means if this.
In staff review, and I would say that it does meet some of that.
It does.
Yeah, and the planning board agrees that they would, and then if we vote in a affirmative, then town halls, you guys have to notify Keene, you know, what's going on, what we want to do.
So, we need to appoint me to that.
Oh.
Myself or him?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, okay, I guess we've done into ZBA 24004, which is that special exception for All Purpose Storage LLC, requesting a special exception pursuant to section four, Article B 2A of the zoning ordinance to allow warehouse and/or industrial park use. Subject property is shown at tax map 203 lot 20 in the business and rural ag districts. Seated for this will be myself, Brian, Lisa, Ann, and I'll see Jay for Adam.
Kurzinski, also.
Yeah, Ann. Yeah, I'm sorry. So it's Ann, Lisa, myself, Brian, and Jay. So, I guess what I'm asking for is direction on regional impact. How far can we take this? Or does this, this would have to vote?
You're just taking it as a potential, just a potential.
Okay, it does not have a potential for.
It's just a potential for.
Oh, I think, yeah.
That's what the warning is.
So, I would.
So you wouldn't read that.
I make a motion that the application we're talking about has a potential for.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
No, this is, we're not even open yet. This is housekeeping work. We're not open yet.
We'll speak up when.
Yeah, we'll, thank you for reminding us though. No, no, thank you, thank you. So what has been, what has been, what has been, the motion that we have on the table is that the ZBA 24004 does rise to the level of having regional impact, and it's moving in second. I guess the only discussion I would have on the motion is what does it mean? Does it mean this, does it mean that we stop doing it tonight? Okay, all right, because I know there's a, there is a prescribed method of how we notify, and then they have the ability to weigh in.
Exactly.
Okay. So, all those in favor of, of who we are.
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion that ZBA 24004 application rises to the level of regional impact.
Potential. Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, so we're thinking of that far. And we would want to look at that, give, move back to the office a couple of weeks, make sure that we do this now, what we have to do. And it's really the city, because it's really, it's pretty recent. Second case on our agenda was, well, it's, I'm sorry, I'm not considering this. So, All Purpose Storage LLC has requested a special exception pursuant to section five, Article B 2A of the zoning ordinance to allow warehouse and/or industrial park use. Subject is shown at tax map 203 lot 20, and is in the business rural ag districts. We have determined that this does rise to the level of regional impact as a board, and we will ask staff to follow through on that issue. So I guess what we are now going to do is we're going to ask the applicant to tell us what they want to do. Open the public hearing. No.
Okay, so because it was not properly noticed.
Okay.
Well, sorry, because it was not continued from the last time, it was before the board.
Okay.
And, yeah, so we're not here tonight, and it has to be noticed.
Okay.
No, every, because it wasn't continued like the last meeting.
No, it wasn't.
It was, but it wasn't continued.
No, I understand. This is the first, this is the first of his board is considering this application.
But it wasn't continued to this date.
No, I understand.
It's a new.
It's a new application.
It's a new application. So it was noticed for this application. Should have been, should have been, because it's a new application.
Yeah, all the butters were not notified last time, but they have now, as I said, they've notified us that.
But it wasn't continued when it was put for you.
We never heard.
No, we never heard.
We never heard.
Oh, because, as it says in the minutes, we actually didn't hear it because the butters were notified.
I'd better tell the minutes, we.
Yeah, so we didn't open the case, and we didn't continue the case. We never even opened the case.
Because of lack of notice.
Yeah.
We refused to hear.
Consider it to be a renewed application, first time here. They haven't heard it before.
So since, since that time, have, have all the butters been?
Technically, yes.
Okay, but I think, I think we could hear.
I'm not positive.
Because, because we didn't, we didn't even consider it. We never opened the hearing, we never, it didn't need to be continued because we didn't open. So this, this, we just moved it to this week's, this month's agenda.
Yeah, in order for it to be noticed.
In order for it to be noticed properly. So you didn't, you didn't take any action in any way. So this would be our first action that ever has been notified, and we could hear it in the comments.
Yeah. I agree. What are you saying, if you agree with that, or if something hasn't said that, and you're not going to go back to that yet?
It was my understanding.
Yeah, because it wasn't continued.
Sorry, say anything.
Here's the, it was my understanding, because that was a continued I had that day, that it couldn't be heard tonight.
Well, no, no, it's considered a renewed application.
We never asked your case. It can't be continued if we didn't open.
Yeah, we never opened it.
So we never had the option to say continue with that.
Right, yeah, we never opened.
Yeah.
So the person who gave you that advice.
Assumes we're open meeting, and then decline to hear it because of all the butters, but he never opened it.
He never opened the case. We took three things last, last time, and just said, take it down the road.
Goodbye, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
My name is Joe Hoppett. I'm a lawyer from Keene. I represent Sherry Howard and the butter. The notices that were sent out for the May 20th meeting, predated May 20th. Those notices were for that meeting. You didn't take action on that meeting. You tabled it. Whatever you did, it's not there in the minutes, but you didn't vote to continue. You didn't preserve that notice from the May, early May notices. You have to start from scratch tonight with new notices for the next scheduled meeting, whenever that is.
So you're saying that the people who were notified about the May 20th meeting were not notified about the June meeting?
They weren't re-notified?
They were not re-notified with a new notice. They were not. But had you moved to continue, but had you moved to continue the May 20th hearing, that May 6th or May 8th notice would carry forward. You didn't do that, so you don't have notice for two minutes.
Right, so, Mr. Chairman, it looks like, I'm going to make a motion here, that we have not opened this yet, have we?
Yes, we did, well, the city opened it.
Okay, so I request that we continue this meeting to the July 23rd, or whatever that date is, so that the butters can be notified appropriately.
We got a notice.
We got a notice.
Dated when? Dated when?
Yeah, you're the only one.
Because all the others had already gotten a notice. We didn't get one the first time.
No, you need to have one for each meeting.
There was only one.
If there's not a notice that you have that's dated for this meeting tonight, then it's.
It is.
She's the only one who did, though.
Yeah.
She was the one who was excluded.
Oh, so you're the only one that got it. See that? Okay, me too.
It's because she didn't get it from Swansea.
Yes. Yeah, but we should have mailed them all back now, because the meeting is not May, it's now June. Okay, that answers your question.
There were several Swansea that knew the other one.
Nobody else got the new notice?
We only know from Avery's son.
Okay, so this was in town because Mrs. Stevens, the only butter that is not properly noticed prior.
Okay.
And we were under the impression that this was continued, which is why everyone is not getting noticed.
It was not continued.
But now it is.
Well, we also should have, because, because if we continue it and this meeting was not properly noticed, then that means the next meeting would not be properly noticed either. So it seems to me as if we should not continue, we should be waiting and just noticing.
Yeah, because if we continue it, we'll notice, we notify people next week, then that's not enough time, is it? We're talking about two weeks, what happens in July?
If we continue it in July, the people who come to that meeting will not have a notice for, for this meeting. So if we continue it, that meeting is invalid because people were noticed.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Noticeings have to go regardless, whether we continue it or not. It's the same process.
Yeah, so I think we don't need to continue it. I think what we need to do is postpone it until next month and send out the proper notices to everybody.
Because I think you only have to have a 10-day notice. Yeah, so.
So is this because the ones who want to put it in are here tonight?
What's that?
Is that, this because the ones who want to put that straw can on their yard is in the.
No, no, the issue here is that we're supposed to notify the butters of anything that's going to happen. But we notified you, correct me if I go astray here, Mr. Chairman, or stuff like that. We notified you in May of the May meeting. We didn't notify you guys, re-notify you guys of the June meeting, which we have to do. So we can't have a meeting unless the butters are formally notified, otherwise it can become a protestable offense, and we're not going to do that. So we're going to table this, if the chairman allows it, and Mr. Stefan agrees, and then we're going to notify everybody, everybody, like they were supposed to have done the last time. And then we'll hear this case again. The problem is, we're discussing the case that's not really a case that I mean.
And if we hurry, I can get some more ice cream.
I have a.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
I know.
So, a motion to, what, what's the proper motion to be for?
To be tabled.
Tabled?
You can't, you can't. I think it's tabled, yes.
Is it?
You can't continue it. No, you actually opened it.
Well, then I think you should close the public hearing without prejudice or something like that. We should vote without prejudice to reconsider this.
I'm okay with that. We're allowed to.
Do we have to close the public hearing first, and then do that?
Yeah, let's have a motion to close the public hearing.
And then, would that be a second play at the apple, though, if somebody gives those minutes? Because we already opened it.
Did you actually open the public hearing?
Yeah.
I don't think you did.
I don't think he did.
And you shouldn't have. People weren't noticed correctly, right?
I like the answer.
Okay.
It was never opened.
I couldn't remember whether you opened it.
I didn't hear him say anything.
I didn't hear you say anything.
My tour book.
Okay, shall I tell the public what we're doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, this is what we're thinking about. You guys got your counsel here.
Well, we did, we did open the public hearing. We allowed counsel to speak as a result.
Yeah.
As a public result.
Yeah.
You should probably just table this. Whatever you're going to do, you're going to continue it. You have to end up, you have no choice about that. Whether you call it tabling it, rescheduling it, or continuing it, it matters not to me.
What we don't want to do is get hung up on that, that we've opened it, and then we've closed it, and then have somebody complain about it.
You may be over-lawyering that.
Just a bit. We're a little gun-shined Swansea right now.
All right, so I guess the motion's in order to table this public hearing until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Which is July 23rd, I heard somebody say?
No.
No.
July 3rd, maybe July.
July 15th.
July 15th.
Correct.
Yeah.
Two, three, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion on the table?
Yeah, so how are we crafting this? So we are going to say that the meeting was open.
I have moved to table this application and public hearing until all butters are appropriately noticed.
Also, we're not doing the.
That sounds, that sounds.
I like that.
I like that.
We can do that, because even if we hold it, we can.
And then you realize that you didn't notice properly.
Yeah.
So you're saying you want to table it because.
So it doesn't go through as an official.
We haven't made any actions yet, so we just table it.
First action.
Put you aside until we.
So we didn't table.
Most important thing, I'll be sixty in our next meeting.
Happy birthday.
Is it active?
It's not open.
What's that?
No, I think it's about the same thing.
Okay.
But tabling is where.
Tomato, tomato?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tabling is more.
I talked to my broker. He said I'd be able to tell him.
If continuation doesn't, I'll be fine.
The tabling is, is that we have to be noticed.
Tabled.
Oh, perfect, perfect. Okay, so then restate.
The motion is on the table that Brian put is to, is to table this, so that proper notice can be given.
Yeah, so I'm rephrasing my motion, right, so let's see if we get it right, so the applicant's question, whether you guys want a special meeting prior to.
Well, that, we haven't decided, the motion is, is to table until our next meeting, regular scheduled meeting, but we then could consider another motion to have a special meeting.
I would not consider a regular meeting scheduled, regular, I think that's most appropriate.
So I think that's a separate issue.
It is a separate issue.
Special meeting.
Second motion for that. You don't have a second on the first motion.
I second.
Oh, you do.
Did we rewrite the motion? What's the motion now?
Rutgers moved to cable this application, and it's for a special exception, ZBA 24-004, public hearing until all the butters are appropriately noticed. It doesn't say until the next meeting. It just says until all the butters are appropriately noticed.
Okay. So then we have.
I second that.
Okay.
Okay.
So do we know when that is?
So, let us finish the vote, and then we'll explain what we've done.
Yeah.
Right, it's been moved in second to table this application until our, well, because of the, there's the desire, or the need to properly notice all of others. Questions on that? All in favor of the motion, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. It would, I think it would best to postpone this myself to our next regularly scheduled.
I agree.
Especially meetings, particularly in a summer, very hard. I wanted to keep this one back.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we rehear case 24-004 on our next scheduled meeting, which will be the 15th of July, a meeting here at Rickon Hall at 19:00. Uh, 7:00 P.M.
Did folks hear that?
7:00 P.M., July 15th.
Thank you.
So what we're doing is, we voted to table the application, so it's not denied, it's not processed, it's not anything, okay? Until we can go ahead, and his office can go ahead, and send out the appropriate legal butter notifications indicating the July meeting, okay, and then it will be here again July 15th at 7:00 P.M. That's acceptable. We have to, it's only right that everybody get notified properly.
Would you have liked to table it anyway, where none of the people from the company can get? Their own zone. Oh, it's not.
No.
No.
No, it's here.
Anyway, we have a motion to, I mean, on the table.
I'll send you the motion.
Okay, thank you very much. It's moved now in second to table this meeting, until proper notice can be provided to all of others, and postponed to our next regularly scheduled zoning board meeting. All right, all those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
We'll take a five-minute recess, and let folks do. We do have one more case before us.
Thank you for coming. Try the rest.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Nice to see everybody committed to the way things work. Come on out. Thank you.
Yeah, what'd you say? I guess the application stands as preemptive. I don't have more information. But it also, it also, it doesn't have the ability to click on things quickly.
All right, you back? We have a left, so we now have ZBA 24-008, Variants Sign Art, has requested a variance pursuant to.
Before you get there, did you deal with 24-005, just announce that the decision's going?
Thank you, we're back up here.
It's on the agenda for the next round, of course.
Yes, we'll take up ZBA 24-005, which is a variant Scott and Ryan, and Whitney Ryan have requested a variance pursuant to section four, Article A of the Town of Swansea zoning ordinance to have a small town tractor bay within their farming building. Subject property is shown at tax map 228 lot five, and is in the rural agricultural district. We did hold a onsite meeting today, a site visit, and it was during that site visit. Now, I'll let one of the, I think I'll let one of the members of the, of the board, because they were all there, explain what happened, as we were up there, or what, the way we left it, and I'll leave it up to anybody to help us out.
You do.
The applicant withdrew without prejudice the application for that, and we accept that.
Yeah.
We voted to accept. Brian, we're just going to motion to accept the.
Requested.
To all, and I second.
All right. Two vote, three. These came here, we'll move on to three C, ZBA 24-00.
I'm sorry, just a final word. Did you have a vote? I didn't see it.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay, because it's not me.
It's okay.
You two nailed it, so I'm sorry.
Sign Art has requested a variance pursuant to section three, Article S 6A of the Town of Swansea zoning ordinance to attach an additional FW web sign to the FW web building along Old Homestead Highway. Subject property is shown at tax map 224 lot 28, is in the rural, in the business, residence, and rural ag. It comes over this trip, triple there. We'll see Wayne for Adam in this case. And I know, I know you've sort of been kicking this one around a little bit, but I think it would help me sort of make sure, take it right back to the beginning, tell us where the, where the actual sign is, that's true. You know, and then follow through the application, and let us know what you're looking to do with more signs, and how that's supported. But it's like, just like taking it back to the beginning would be helpful for me.
Great, so Ahmed from Sign Art in Moldan, Mass. Appreciate you having me here. This, and I could pass it around, it was notes, but this is the lot that we are on.
We all have it.
We all have it. Oh, great, great. So if we go to that page, we'll see the building and how it's located, and we have been approved for the FW web sign that is going over the service entrance, which people come in to pick up small parts, and one has been approved for the Frank Home Web, which is the bath and kitchen showroom.
Right.
So there's two different companies, and they certainly are sister companies. But we have an issue with this curve on 32, and so we've stayed within the approval lines of, you know, the, what you guys want for the main signs. And I know that they met with the planning board early on, and we normally build a building that's giant and red, and that didn't go over so big, which I don't blame you. So they graciously, you know, said that they would make it gray, and got it all approved and so forth. and got it all approved and so forth. So that even hurts us a little more where we don't have good visibility with people coming down thirty-two to really see the entrance where we want them to go in with the trucks. So this, this is multi-phase as far as we feel we need the sign for branding visibility because we changed the color of the building, so it's pretty mundane. We feel we need it for traffic safety where these trucks aren't flying down the road and they go by that entrance and have to figure out how to turn around in a half an hour or so, I guess is not an easy thing. And we don't want to cause accidents, and so I think we've, we were helped quite a bit by Stephane and who came up with a new plan and I think you all have a copy by now of why we think it's going to be detrimental to the company. We are not enabled to put up this additional sign. We truly believe it's not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood or any surrounding areas. And it certainly would hurt, you know, F W Web's trade dress that they, you know, they advertise and if you watch a baseball game or Celtics games, you'll see that they advertise it quite, quite often. And so I think that's the long and short of it. I think we wrote it up reasonably well, hopefully. It was a learning experience for us, but we don't think we're asking anything that is super huge or detrimental or ugly or it's going to hurt the neighborhood or any of the butters. Clearly, I was fortunate that I didn't have a whole bunch of the butters coming, we didn't have to.
We all noticed that I didn't have enough room in here.
So if you guys have any questions or anything, I certainly can hopefully help talk to those questions. You have a proposal sheet of where we're looking to put it, and you also have on the plot plan an area where it's circled on the, on the plot plan where it's facing. So if there's any other things you'd like to discuss, yes ma'am?
My, my question is, because my ability to read this is poor, so
Well, that's good, I go with you now.
If, this is the curve you're talking about, is this the circle here, that?
Yes.
Okay, so
Right in that corner.
Right here. So
So when they come flying around the curve, we're worried that they won't see anything or
In fairness, that's thirty mile an hour zone.
In what town?
But
I think it's got run over and I was doing forty.
They wouldn't see anything until they go way past it to the other entrance. That's where the other signs are.
Is there any signage, I'm sorry, is there any signage on the road prior to, so an individual coming up?
Nothing on this side of the building.
Nothing, nothing, no, not only in the building, but like
Or on the road or anything.
There's nothing saying, you know, service deliveries only or, you know? I'm just wondering why that would be.
Now, as I look at the table here, you're allowed a secondary sign, but does the secondary sign have to be?
You're looking at freestanding.
Oh, freestanding.
Yeah.
It's an attached sign, but what I'm saying, well, she's asking about other signs and I'm looking at freestanding signs on the road. Am I reading this correct that the freestanding, the secondary sign has to be attached to the primary sign? Because in, under six A, in addition to a freestanding sign, with attached secondary sign. And in the table, it says, the secondary sign, one per each business on a lot, name, nature, business owner. I thought that secondary sign meant that you could have one at each of the curb curbs. But if they have to be attached to each other, then maybe not. So I'm beginning to see where it's going. I thought we could have on the roadway, a sign of each curbs.
I've never interpreted it that way.
But, but it's, you know, the way six A is worded, it says in addition to a freestanding sign, with attached secondary sign.
It doesn't explain that well.
I think that might be a significance under.
Yeah, but when it says the number of secondary signs per freestanding sign is one per each business on a lot, it doesn't say they have to be in the same location. And that's And so I thought when I first read this, that you could have a freestanding sign and one curbs and a secondary sign with the other curbs. And so I thought, well, they're coming down the road, going at appropriate speed.
Yep.
And I'm sorry, but even though it's gray, it stands out.
Oh, it's pink.
It stands out, so people know it's there, is what I'm saying. So then they see that sign, and the sign could say, you know, it's supposed to name the nature of business only, but it could say F W Web deliveries or something like that, because that's the nature of
Well, the thing that we were concerned about is, as a team, when we thought that through a little bit, is that the, the normal person that wants to come in to F W Web to shop or pick up, they're going to go in the wrong entrance, which isn't really attached to the other entrance, so they're going to be going in and going, I got no place to go, I have to come out. So we felt if we just put the logo on the building, and it's not F W Web, it's just their brand, which is a round circle that's a valve that says Web, that is noticeable to the truckers and the customer wouldn't be in their face on the street seeing something and going, oh, I gotta go in here, and they go in and they, they're stuck in there.
See, that's, that's the part where I was trying to figure out how a delivery person, how that would convey to them that that's the entrance they want to live.
Well, the delivery people would know because all of our locations have a logo only, no wording.
No wording.
At, on the building near the delivery entrance. So we're really concerned that it will cause more harm by putting a pole sign out there.
Says delivery.
And, you know, get everybody, you know, the normal person, they see a sign, oh, let's go in here, and they're going to go in. And this is away from the entrance on the building, but noticeable by the view from the road. So that's how we interpreted the need for it.
Now, my follow-up question is, I hear you, it makes that more sense to you. That area is outdoor storage for a variety of things, the area north of the main building, right? That's going to be outdoor storage of things?
Yes.
Would, would a contractor be coming in there to pick up stuff?
No.
No, so the only people going in that are, are delivery and
The tractor trailers, as far as I
And of course, the tractor trailers have to be coming south of thirty-two because they can't get to Swansea any other way.
Oh, I don't know that, but
Well, they better not come over those covered bridges.
That's true. Well, I don't know the area well enough, so I
If a tractor trailer is coming the other way, they're not going to see this, this sign, and they're going to have the same problem. They might turn in the, the other entrance. But, but we hope they're not coming the other way, because, I mean, they could come up thirty-two from Massachusetts and stuff like that, but if they come up Route ten and try to get over to, there's only one road, one, one bridge they can go across and
They can go Desmond Thompson.
That's what I'm saying, one bridge they can go across. But we don't, we've had a lot of trouble with people thinking the other bridges are okay. And I'm just, I'm just saying that
Well, they will certainly train their drivers the best they can, but
Understood, but what I'm guessing, you know, what, what are you doing about the driver who happens to become a norm, is what I'm saying.
They are all trained that they're not going to go in when they see a store sign, they're not going to go in that entrance.
They know there's another entrance.
They know there's another entrance.
And they know there's a lot where the stuff they're delivering
And we were trying to be delicate with not putting up even a shipping, receiving sign out in the street because, you know, I make signs for a living for forty-seven years, but enough's enough. You don't want to oversign a facility. So we felt that the logo up there would do what we needed to do and not add a million signs all over the place.
It may say this on it, is it lit or is it just?
Oh, it's not lit.
And then tell me where the other signs are on the building. I understand where this one is, facing, I guess.
Let's see if my office prepared it properly.
Yes.
This is the one that he's proposing.
So, would you like to look at this?
Yeah, that'd be great.
This is the
Okay, so the far end is the showroom, is this the
Yes.
The side closest to the high school.
The end, yeah. The side, that's the way the contractors are going. There's a little overhang on the side, on the Route thirty-two side.
I haven't seen this building, Wayne, this person, I just see it on the
I was trying to figure out the two entrances.
The first entrance right now, I think they're just using, that's ultimately going to be the entrance where the sign is going to be, right on the building.
No, that's the delivery.
That's the delivery entrance.
The other entrance is going to have the pole sign.
I hope they're not going to keep those trailers on Route thirty-two long term, because I can't see pictures. Thirty, going, going thirty.
I talked right into that.
They're very community orientated, so I'm sure if there was something that you were doing that really wasn't correct, if you guys brought it up.
Well, right, right now, they've got two office trailers right on Route thirty-two on that bad corner.
Because they're doing construction.
Yeah, they're doing construction right now, which is good, because it'll, people generally slow down anyway. Should be, but we just have a hard, I mean, people want to open up on that, you know, it's parallels the airport tarmac and it just, you could go and
I was just going to say, you might say it's a thirty mile, but I bet you go faster.
Right.
I think it's actually forty, but let's ask, when you ask that question.
Thirty.
Maybe on the corner, but
Yeah, the corner of thirty. And I've been, I've got
The other side, is that around this face of the building or this face?
I can tell you a story that I don't have that I won't
Oh, yeah, on the left.
Officer Jim Kelly.
Okay, okay, that will help you out with these.
I learned to drive a stick on a Porsche nine-two-eight S, and when you got it up over a hundred, the whole car would sink.
This is the far end of the
I drove that from Jacksonville, Florida, and
One is, one is on the side, and one is, one is here and one is here. Two different companies.
But the one, the one that we're looking at for the truckers coming from the door, it's, it's this one.
Yep. Oh, it's really right there, because that's the building, that's the That's on the
Yeah. So we're looking at this one, not this one?
No, we're, we're only going
That's confusing, this
Oh, but it's facing this way.
Literally this road, I think Like you go to church on Sunday, there's sixty cars going directly here. So
So this here is where? This here? This, 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 so this right, I know that, and it's facing this way. Yes, right here. It's right, so it's when it comes to the corner. Right to, it's, right to the
This one's
So this, this is like right here.
Around the corner.
Okay, yeah, facing the other way.
You guys need to ease out if you're
So we are just, all right, so I, this is a question, are, are, the way, the way of understanding our variance, this is to add an additional sign. It's not about square footages, it's not about, it's just one more sign, not anything else.
Well, it's square footage, isn't it?
I don't think there's a, they're not asking us to
One square foot for free line of free of footage.
Oh, they must do. No, you're looking at freestanding again.
Okay, okay, sorry.
The ordinance is slightly confusing, like
The total sign face, there are signs attached to the primary, there's show, show mathematics, you need one square foot for each linear foot of width of the side of the building, unless it's signed attached. So how many square feet do we have? How many linear feet do we have on that side?
But we could deal on that. What I would say, the front side, the side that's parallel to thirty-two.
Well, we're not talking about the sides parallel to the side.
Nope, 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 it's already been approved.
It doesn't say, it, it, I'm looking at six feet.
Yep.
It, it's one, show mathematics, you need one square foot for each linear foot of width of the side of the building on which the sign is attached. So we're not talking about the parallel to Route thirty-two, we're talking about the sign being attached to the
So this is only seventy-eight square feet.
How many?
Seventy-eight.
Okay, so the sign is twenty-five, twenty-five pi in, in square feet. That's, that's what the area of, the diameter of ten foot is, twenty-five pi, which means it's seventy-five plus
Seventy-eight point five square feet precisely.
I think that may be it.
And it's, I can't do that in my head, but I did it on the computer. But we use the same thing, so this is significantly under what would be allowable if I was allowed that third sign. Significantly under. We really, as you can see on the building that we presented, it's not quite ridiculously outstanding, it's just enough to be there to get posted. We're trying to play the line to, to not make it look ridiculous.
Just how long is that side of the building?
Yeah.
I forget, but I did, I did the math, but
We both did the math as well.
Okay, so if it's seventy-five feet, I just can't, the scale is so small here, I can barely read.
Yeah, I had that, how, what's the diameter of that sign you hear?
Forty.
Proposal?
It's a ten foot
So this is forty right there, I'm just doing a
So it's really, you know, it's not ten by ten, it would be a hundred
Right, 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 and it's, and it's wide as boys.
And actually, reading your ordinance, I was confused, and it confuses everybody, I think, what the secondary sign is. Because it does say you could have a secondary sign for a wall, which we're not technically doing because we've got one for one company, one for another, so
Yeah, it doesn't, so I'd like to figure out from the scale of the diagram here, that seventy-eight point five does meet to the corner.
Yes, yes, I wouldn't be here if it didn't. We, we're really just asking because the way the ordinance is written, it's written as that extra sign.
All right. Any other questions? Right, oh, and the definition for secondary signs It's basically, it was going to be a, a game, it's probably with a small step, one as a secondary sign.
Yes.
Yeah, this is, this is a second attached sign.
For each business.
It should, it should, because there's, there's two businesses there, and one of the businesses is getting an additional sign.
Do you understand the issue?
Well, it's good to talk it through.
Thank you, appreciate that. So close the public hearing. Any, any questions or discussion before we go to the questions? Is Wayne is seated for Adam here? Okay, we'll, the questions, we'll see what we can do here. Do we agree that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest? Let Ryan start.
I don't see any evidence that presented that would indicate this is going to have a public benefit way, so not be contrary to public interest.
Lisa?
I agree with Ryan.
Anne?
I agree.
Wayne?
Yes.
Do we agree that granting the variance, or do we, do we really granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance? What do Lisa probably think about that?
I do think it would preserve the, the spirit of the ordinance.
Okay, which is to not inundate it with the broader signs.
With not too many signs, but just appropriate enough for the trucks coming down thirty-two.
This is the one that we're talking about, the other seems to have a purpose to it, as opposed to this is just marketing.